Okay, I call to order the Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, May 13th, 2020. And the first order of business is the approval of the March 11th, 2020 minutes. Everybody looked at them, and any additions or corrections? Anything? You have a motion?
Move to approve the minutes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I have an abstention, but I wouldn't.
Abstain.
I abstain as well, for the same reason.
All right, next we're going to move into our public hearings. We do have three public hearings, and I want to remind everybody of the rules before we start. So if you're here to speak on a particular hearing, on a particular item, you have three minutes to speak. There's lights that will, that should be going on green as you get closer to the end, it'll turn yellow, and then red when your time is done. If you're representing a group, you can have five minutes, and we will have time for both opposition and support of items on our list. So, the next order of business is the hearing on the petition of Centra Health and Joe Archimbo for a conditional use permit in an RC Conservation District and/or for high-density residential district to allow fill within the 100-year floodplain to facilitate improvements to the Summit Lake spillway at 1,400 and 1,700 Enterprise Drive. And I will be recusing myself because of business interests, and I will have to step out until the second one, so Kenzie will take over for me.
Dave has left the meeting.
Dave, can you give him a call and see what's going on, please?
I do think he was recusing himself as well for this part, so maybe that's what...
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I think he just came back on. Okay, Dave, can you hear us?
Okay. Dave, can you hear us?
Okay.
Cham can hear you.
All right, Dave, if you're not speaking, you need to mute your microphone. Okay. All right, Dave, did you need to abstain from this petition? Well, technology, okay.
If he's muted, you're not going to be able to hear him.
Unmute. Okay. All right, Dave, did you need to say anything before this petition? Okay, Cham, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. I guess we'll go ahead and get started. You might want to just try and call them on the phone. Yeah. All right, Madam Vice Chair, members of Planning Commission, Summit Lake was constructed as part of the Windhurst and Summit Traditional Neighborhood Developments. The lake provides a regional stormwater aesthetic and recreational benefit. The fill is requested to make improvements to the spillway in order to comply with the Department of Conservation and Recreation's dam safety requirements. A corresponding amount of cut volume is proposed to offset the proposed fill. The proposal is in keeping with the goals of the Comprehensive Plan, which states to minimize fill or development within the 100-year floodplain and wetlands, except as required for water resources management and passive recreational projects. And since this, the Summit Lake provides both of those things, staff believes it is in keeping with the Comprehensive Plan, and we do recommend approval of the conditional use permit.
All right, thank you. Who is here to speak on behalf of this petition?
Mike Wilson, McGurk, Crawford, Design Engineering.
Yes, please, could you come forward and sign in? It should be a sign-in sheet here.
Madam Vice Chair, thank you very much. This project, as was mentioned, is a, you know, DCR dam safety. This project was, went through a study from DCR several years ago, found out that the dam was high hazard, the emergency spillway did not have enough capacity to pass the required probable maximum floodstorm. The current spillway is about 30 feet wide on the flat portion of the spillway where the water would go through, and in order to pass the required storm, then it needs to be widened to about 140 feet. So in the process of doing that, to make sure we can have a safe dam that stays in place, you know, and does not erode during a design storm, anything like that that does happen, we're proposing a concrete emergency spillway that will go down the dam. The current floodway, floodplain is an elevation of 742 in that area, which is about four feet up on the bottom of the dam. So to do any work to stabilize the dam, do anything out there is in the floodplain, and that's where, when this first came up, we met with the city representative, Aaron Hawkins, as well as Kate Miller, to discuss what needed to be done. We have DCR telling us we need to make improvements. We have a floodplain that we're trying to stay out of, but they were, they were conflicting. So we met with the city to discuss that originally, as we went through developing any type of design plan, anything that would have to happen from that standpoint. And that was where it was discussed, you know, whatever was done to make an improvement, to make sure that we're having an offsetting cut volume, so that there's no net change to the floodplain. And right now, it's looking like that would be about, you know, 1,100 yards of fill, 1,100 yards of cut, in order to make that work, so there's a net change, no zero, net zero change in that process. You know, any questions that you do have about this, I'd be willing, you know, happy to answer anything there. The sketch that we did have submitted, what the submittal does kind of show you where we're making the improvements, how those are planned, the existing cart path that goes around there, we're still incorporating that, so the residents are able to use and enjoy the lake and everything that they currently do now.
Okay, thank you. We very well might ask you to come back up and answer questions.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition to this petition? Okay, at this point, the public hearing is closed. Commissioners, if you guys have any questions that you'd like to direct to the city planner or the meeting from Hurt and Profit?
The corresponding amount of cut, that was what I wanted to know, volume is proposed to offset the fill volume. Can you just explain what that means, or show us on the diagram?
Yes. So, the emergency, the current floodplain is right about here. I'm kind of screening, you know, where the boundary is 742, elevation of the bottom of the dam. The total slope is a 738, so we're about four feet of elevation at the, when Tom Creek does give that 100-year flood in, I know, it would put water at the bottom of the dam by about four feet. So any of this work that we're showing right in through here, any of that particular work is in the floodplain, we're working in the floodplain. In order to keep the water, as it's coming down, the emergency spillway, we make a berm on either side to keep that water, so it goes down in a chute to stay where we want it to go, and not just spread across the whole dam. So we have these little wing walls, if you can see, on either side. And those particular sections are filled, you know, the body under is filled, the slope of the spillway, just to try to get a constant slope on our spillway versus the things that are out there. So in order to do that, there's about 1,150 cubic yards of, quote, fill, whether that's concrete material, dirt material, that's going in there. What we're proposing to do is in this particular area there, as well as an area in here, we plan to have an offsetting volume. We will cut, but both areas are already in the floodplain, where we can then lower that particular area by a foot or two foot, something like that, to give you the corresponding volume that offsets what we're trying to fill in there, so there's a net change of zero across the project.
Thank you. Any other questions? Have Dave on, or Cham? Not Cham?
Does he have any questions?
Dave, do you have any questions?
Uh, no.
Okay. Well, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the proposal as written.
Second?
Second.
Any additional comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And if someone might be able to go grab Tom, I think he's right outside. Sorry, that'd be great, thank you. Thank you. Oh, he's, he's coming in, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Back. Okay. Second item that we're going to look at today is the petition of RNR of Virginia, Jonathan Rose, for a conditional use permit in a B3 Community Business District to operate a tire store in an existing building at 3139 Old Forest Road.
Members of Planning Commission, I can say this worked a lot better yesterday, but we'll try and get through it the best that we can. So this property is currently zoned B3, and most recently was used as a carpet store. Tire stores are permitted in the B3 districts upon approval of a conditional use permit by city council. While this proposed use, and in fact, the zoning along the corridor, is not really in keeping with the proposed neighborhood commercial uses, city council has approved recently other auto-oriented uses in the area. One existing entrance to the property would be closed, which would improve access management to the property, as well as help along Old Forest Road, and the petitioner will be working with staff in order to bring the site as close as we can into compliance with the city's landscaping ordinance. So staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit.
Thank you. Who's here to speak on behalf of this petition? Please come forward and state your name, and there's a form you can write your name on, and then tell us a little bit about this.
Tom, can you switch the sign?
My name is Will Sigler, and I'm with Cardinal Survey and Design, representing RNR. Mr. Jonathan Rose is here. Rick Reed and Gary Case are the realtors on the buying and selling side of the transaction. It's, it's, to us, it's a no-brainer project, an adaptive reuse of an existing building, so it doesn't sit there and go to waste. They're not proposing any improvements to the, other than signage and facade. They're not adding to the building whatsoever, and renovating the inside for their particular use. We have made contact with adjacent neighbors. Hadn't gotten no response from them. I think it's pretty easy, Will, any of us could answer questions if you got them.
Great, thanks.
The only change that you're making is to the, is to one of the access points, so if you just pointed at where that was before you sit down?
Thank you, Tom.
Okay, got it, perfect.
That was an entrance, and it's going to be.
And that's actually off of Confederate Avenue, correct? Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sigler. Anybody else here to speak in favor of this petition?
Okay, well, I'll make a note of that. I'm going to put you both on speaker, all right?
Again, if you could please state your name and sign your name there.
We got you.
Let's see, Tom Martin, that's my name.
Hello?
Can you hear us, Cham?
Yeah.
Okay.
I represent, oh, I'm Gary Case, we're Gary Case and Company. The only thing Will didn't point out, we are adding additional landscaping along Old Forest Road that's not currently there. Also, as stated in the report from staff, there's no negative impact on the adjoining neighborhood, so that's all I want to add.
Thank you. And the other supporters want to come forward? Okay, and at this time, are there any people in opposition of this? Anybody here, or anybody online, no letters or anything? Okay, well then, at this point, we'll close the public hearing, and we might have a question or two for Mr. Sigler, but we can discuss this. Anybody have any comments?
I don't have any questions. The other kinds of businesses all along Old Forest Road, I think this fits in just as well as the carpet store did, and so I have no objection.
I have no objections to this. I drive by the site multiple times per week there. This does solve one situation. My wife will now know what's going in there, because every time we drive by, says, "What's going to go in that building?" But, I mean, we have auto parts stores across the street, we've got garages, oil change places, why not a tire place? I mean, it's better than having an empty building. I'd rather have something going in there that's going to be productive than an empty shell.
I was curious, is this a? This is a tire, tire store, is it a, like, automotive retail?
All circuits are busy, please.
You know, radio, wheels, what? I was just curious what the nature of it was.
Should I come forward?
Sure, yeah, you can come forward.
Sign in as well?
Yeah, that'd be great, thanks.
Yeah, I think it'll be the last one, or Facebook.
Hi, my name's Jonathan Rose. My company is a franchise, and we sell passenger tires, light truck tires, wheels, and do light automotive aftermarket work. If people want to lift up their truck, or people want that off-road look, however, they want to use the products, that's good for them, and it's pretty simple, cut and dry, and a very clean business.
Question for Mr. Rose? Sounds like a nice, not really a lot of competition, it seems like, for something like that, so it's good.
Well, there's, there's plenty, but we, we think, this is a burgeoning area, and we've had our eye on it for a long time. We're Norfolk-based, and we've been wanting to come to the Lynchburg Market for a while. Rick Reed and I have worked for a long time to find a suitable location, and we think this is a good one for us.
That's great, well, thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's a nice, nice use of a property that's been sitting for a little bit. I was wondering what would, it's a unique building, you're not, not, every business would use something like that. I think that's neat that they can be able to use it.
Yeah, I agree.
If there are no, I mean, I think, and it takes away one of the, one of the, one of the issues of traffic on that road. So if there's no further discussion, I'd make a move, a motion rather, that we accept the proposal as stated.
Okay. Okay, well, put it to a vote, all in favor? Aye. Are we getting the votes?
E. Did they vote?
Cham is connected, and Dave can't hear anything.
It can't hear? One, two, three, four, five, we can give. All right, all opposed? All right, well, I think that, I think that's, we can pass that, right?
Oh, yeah.
So, great. You'll be able to take that, city council, and wish you much luck, and look forward to seeing new business in town. Thank you. All right. Next order of business is a petition from TPB Enterprises, Tom Bell, for a conditional use permit to allow fill within the 100-year floodplain at 127 Brunswick, 197 Buckingham Drive, and to rezone approximately 13 acres from R1 low-density residential to R4 high-density residential to allow the construction of 72 townhome units at 197 Buckingham Drive. So are you presenting that, Tom?
Yes, sir. So members of Planning Commission, as you, as the chair stated, there are two petitions. The first is for a conditional use permit to allow fill within the 100-year floodplain. And everything that we are talking about today is below this green conservation area and this pale-yellow, which is zoned single-family residential. The future land use map actually recommends a mixture of conservation, mixed-use, and low-density residential for the property, and we will talk about that in a little bit more detail later on. Again, the first petition is to propose this fill within the 100-year floodplain. The area proposed for fill spans 127 Brunswick and over into 197 Buckingham Drive. If approved, a box culvert would be installed in the floodplain to allow access to a 72-unit townhome development. As stated earlier, the property is zoned RC Conservation District and recommended for resource conservation uses on the city's future land use map. Important to remember that resource conservation areas encompass lands with special characteristics that limit land uses and development to protect the city's environmental health. These areas include steep slopes and stream valleys, 100-year floodplains and wetlands. Resource conservation areas are planned to remain in vegetated, open space, and the goal is really to allow them to remain as natural as possible, to stabilize slopes, prevent soil erosion, and provide a natural absorption areas for urban runoff. The proposed elevation of the access would be slightly above the 10-year storm, which equates to a 1 in 10 chance of the crossing overtopping on an annual basis. This is, is important, because the only other means of access to this would be to Buckingham Drive, which the petitioner is proposing to gate as an emergency access. Staff believes the proposed fill is in conflict with the resource conservation land use designation, and also the goals of the Comprehensive Plan that state fill and development within the 100-year floodplain should be minimized, except for water resource management or passive recreational uses. Not to compare the two petitions, but the, the earlier petition this evening, it was meeting those goals. This is just to, staff does not believe the proposal accomplishes either of those, and it's simply being requested as a way to appease the neighbors by not having to have a primary access to Buckingham Drive as part of this proposed townhome development. As such, the planning division recommends denial of filling in the 100-year floodplain. The proposal to rezone from R1 to R4 would allow the development of 72-unit townhome development. The property is currently zoned R1 single, low-density residential, which permits densities of up to 2.9 single detached dwellings per acre, or approximately right around 37 units. So what they're proposing is almost double what is currently allowed by right. While the property is designated for mixed-use, it is also designated for low-density residential uses. Staff does not believe the mixed-use designation is appropriate within this area, because it does not connect into the cornerstone TND development, and it was not planned as part of the TND, cornerstone TND development. And also, the concept planned does not propose any type of mixture of uses, it's just simply townhome development. Again, access to the property would be via a private drive that would actually snake through the other development that you've seen before, and is almost, is over a quarter-mile away from Timberlake Road. So access to the property would be through a 270-unit apartment complex development that's currently under construction, and then through the commercial development that's fronting Timberlake Road out to a stoplight at Candlewood Court. The property would not be served by GLTC, we do not consider it being served, as it's over a quarter-mile away, not a short walking distance. The, the petition as proposed would require 72 parking spaces. Staff is assuming from the plan that would be in driveways and possibly garages on the units, but we're unsure of that. Again, the proposed crossing is just slightly above the 10-year storm, so even though it is slightly above, you're looking at a 1 in 10 chance of the, the bridge, the culvert overtopping annually, which would require the opening of the emergency access. As you know, staff is very supportive of connectivity, and as you know, staff would strongly encourage and argue for connectivity to adjacent neighborhoods when it is a when it is appropriate. In this instance, the, the roads in Windsor Hills are very narrow. They have no sidewalk, they have no curb and gutter. And such, we do not believe that, at this time, they could actually support any additional traffic, which is another reason for the proposal to, to cross the creek and fill in the floodplain. So what does that leave us with? Staff believes that leaves us with the property is more appropriate to be developed as single-family homes as it is zoned. And such, we do recommend denial of the rezoning to R4.
Thank you, Tom. Okay. Who's here to speak on behalf of this petition? I think you all know what you need to do.
Yes, sir. Good evening, my name is Norm Walton. I'm with Perkins Norris and Daniel Cyrus. With Thomas Bielders of Virginia is here and he will assist in presentation this evening. First, I'd like to talk about traffic. The original traffic study for the midtown development was submitted with the previous rezoning, which showed 120 senior adult dwelling living units in this area. So this property was originally planned, even with the earlier versions of midtown as being developed. The traffic study also considered a supermarket and a high-turnover sit-down restaurant as part of the original development, which will not be included, and that reduces the number of trips at the signal at Candlewood Court and Timberlake Road by six, 4,698 trips from the original traffic study. There are improvements being made to Timberlake Road with left turn lanes, right turn lanes, and improvements to the signal at Candlewood Court, which we believe will make, you know, adequate access to Timberlake Road from this development. Seems that this connection is best for planning as well as the adjacent neighborhood as we are eliminating as much as practical the impact to the neighborhood while making a well-designed connection to a principal corridor. As far as utilities go, water and sewer are both available to this site. There's a water extension down the stub of Buckingham Drive, which we can connect to, and there is sewer on-site. The Buckingham connection is shown on the plan as being a connection with a barrier to the stub road to prevent traffic from this development accessing Buckingham on a day-to-day basis. We've had two neighborhood information meetings, and that was a resounding concern from the neighbors that you do not want additional traffic into Buckingham, and we've tried to respect that as much as possible. As far as the flood study, we are proposing a triple six-by-eight box culvert in the crossing, which is larger than the box culvert on Buckingham Drive, which is a double eight-by-eight. As Tom mentioned, the six-by-eight culvert is designed to pass the 10-year storm, which is a typical VDOT secondary or local road design standard. The road elevation is set below Buckingham to assure that we will not increase the 100-year flood elevation. FNR is a firm that's been hired by the developer to provide a no-rise study or a flood study to the city of Lynchburg, which has been submitted and reviewed by city staff. The future land use map does show this area as low-density residential as well as mixed-use in the area that we're talking about where we are rezoning, and we are not requesting a rezoning on any of the RC property, just the R1 property. As staff has acknowledged, you know, the mixed-use is not appropriate for that half of that property as it doesn't connect to the cornerstone development. So we believe that this development as townhomes does mix or does blend properly with the surrounding designations on the future land use map to the north, south, and west as they are either mixed-use and cornerstone, high-density for the remainder of midtown. And there is also a medium-density residential across Dreaming Creek adjacent to midtown. So in summary, we believe that this plan does-
I didn't understand that.
Oops, sorry, my watch is talking to me. We do believe that this plan does demonstrate proper planning as we are trying to do this development in an area that has adequate water, sewer, as well as road infrastructure. We've offered proffers to try to offset the concerns from the neighbors as best as possible. We would ask that at the time after people are allowed to speak, that we have a chance for rebuttal. And then we would ask if you have any questions at this time.
Good afternoon. My name is Daniel Cyrus. I represent TPB Enterprises, the petitioner for this project. First, I'd like to take a moment and just talk about the midtown development and what it, what currently exists and how this plays into the rest of the development. So along Timberlake Road, there are eight residential parcels, or I'm sorry, eight commercial parcels that are comprised of different national tenants. As Mr. Martin pointed out, the second phase of development directly behind that is a high-density apartment development. This is located behind that, which is across the creek, as a medium-density townhome development. Currently located to the rear of that is low-density single-family homes. So we believe that it's a natural transition from high-density to medium-density to low-density residential. As has been pointed out, you know, we're asking for a rezoning to R4 to allow the construction of 72 townhomes as well as a conditional use permit to fill in the floodplain in order to access the development. We've had two neighborhood information meetings with the neighbors and had, had a lot of attendance at both meetings, and we've done our best to take the concerns of the neighborhood and address those in the best way that we can. So some of the concerns that the neighbors had brought up was a landscape buffer, which we've proffered to include a 20-foot landscape buffer at all adjoining residential. One of the, the major concern that was brought up by the surrounding neighborhood was traffic going through the existing Windsor Hills neighborhood. And so that's why we believe that the townhomes is the best fit for this property because in the event that single-family homes were constructed, they would have to connect to the existing public street system. The streets that are located within the midtown development are private, and therefore, single-family homes cannot be connected to them directly. So we have basically created a collector's street for the midtown development, which then dumps onto Timberlake Road a major thoroughfare. As Norm pointed out, the traffic study that was done for the master plan for the development takes that into consideration, and the development is designed to handle that adequately. Another major concern, as has been pointed out, is the emergency exit from the townhome development. So we have proffered that it will be a lockable barrier with a Knox box or similar for emergency personnel to have access through, and we've also proffered for that connection to be of a surface-treated or similar material in order to deter people from using it for anything other than its intended purpose, which is simply an emergency exit. And another concern that was brought up is the rezoning to R4 if there could ever be apartments or similar structures built in this area. And so we've done two things with that. We've proffered both substantial compliance to the current plan, and we specifically proffered that no multi-household structures or apartments would be permitted in this area. As Norm pointed out, we've also had FNR conduct a no-rise flood analysis for the property and for the culverts that we are proposing to install. They've looked both up and downstream of the area in order to determine that we are not causing any impact to the floodplain whatsoever. And the city staff has reviewed that. So just to give you a little bit of background on if this proposal is not successful, that would require, if single-family homes were built in this area, for their connection to be made to the existing public streets, which, as I've said, has been, you know, the resounding comment that we've heard from all neighbors, which is that, you know, they don't want to see any increase in traffic. And again, you know, obviously, connectivity is an important consideration in urban planning. Although it is not public, the, the midtown development by having private streets that connect to a major artery being Timberlake Road essentially creates conductivity throughout that development. For those reasons, we believe this is the best use of this property, and we appreciate your time and consideration and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
One more thing. One of the concerns at our last neighborhood information meeting was the proffer that we made to, to provide a locked barrier to the stub at Buckingham, and if that could be overturned. So I would ask Mr. Martin if he would explain, just for the record, how a proffer could be reversed or changed just so that everybody here in attendance and listening could understand that process. Thank you.
We will have time for rebuttal as well. So I'll make sure that. All right. Anybody here to want to, want to speak in support of this petition? I'll speak on behalf. Anybody want to come forward for that? All right, well, I think we'll go on ahead and hear from people who are here to speak in opposition. So we're going to have people present speaking, and then Eve will be working with us on the folks who are not here but want their voice heard as well. So if you want to come forward, you have three minutes. Please state your name, sign the paper, and then you may have your three minutes of discussion on this.
Are you representing a group or yourself?
Yes. I've been asked by, my name's Jerry Swinton. I was been asked by Mr. Billingsley to speak on behalf of the association. And even though I have 10 minutes, I will be very low-density in my presentation and will not need all of that time. What we have up here, I don't know, Tom, if it's possible to enlarge that. We'll see if that works. What you're going to see up there is something, very simple statement. And before I get to that, I want to add that last time we were here about a year and a half ago, there were some concerns, those were successfully addressed, and we did what I thought was the right thing. We went to council and spoke in favor because that was the right thing to do, and we had seven yes votes. And I hope today is seven yes votes as well for denial. So what we have up here is a little graphic, simplistic, not as good as Norm could do, but simplistic that shows Buckingham Road on the right, single-family detached houses as R1. Going down at the bottom, Hunterdale Road, single-family detached housing, also as R1. On the left side, single-family detached houses in what is technically an R1, although Cornerstone gives it a traditional neighborhood development overlay, and that section in essence is functioning as single-family detached houses. And then we look at the top edge, which would be the creek. That's resource conservation, again, the lowest impact part of our zoning code. So I have in the center, inserting R4, surrounded by established R1, single-family houses, and RC is completely inappropriate in this area and should be denied. Next one, please, Tom. Thank you. Now, what we have here is a, a, a graphic, and you'll see what looks like a backslash line separating Cornerstone from Windsor Hills, and- Thank you. Get back up. And, and anyway, you'll see a tree canopy for Windsor Hills where there's a fair amount of single-family detached R1 housing, and you'll see a very high amount of impermeable surface area in Cornerstone. And you can see that backslash line, maybe about two-thirds of the way on the bottom and going up to the, to the left. And you should see a, a clear delineation between the two. And Tom, if you could please scroll down to the next one. And here, if you look, this photo from the bottom up, you'll notice the impervious area in the section of the highest density. There is more green space designed for the single-family detached housing area of Cornerstone. And what I have, because I want to make certain, I do, do give a compliment to Norm. I like the guy. Engineers can do amazing designs for stormwater runoff. Impervious area still remains. Less green space and lack of tree canopy is an unintended consequences. And the next one, please. This is Dreaming Creek immediately upstream from midtown, what I would call definitely environmentally sensitive. Next one, Tom, please, we're, we're cruising. This is Dreaming Creek along the fantastic walking trail in Cornerstone. The creek does overflow the banks during major storm events and floods the trail, which is up on the top left. And I've tried to get rid of a lot of my sarcasm. Some still comes back with the question, perhaps because it's in a floodplain. And the key part is what will this, due to a crossing in midtown, when you have that much water? And Tom, if you can scroll down, it's a tiny, tiny bit. Thank you, you'll see the bank, and clearly that overflows. Next part, and this is why it's key, and this is strictly for informational purposes, where I want to say, this is a quote from Councilmember Perro at the April 14, 2020 city council meeting. There has been a history of challenges making sure that this developer meets city regulations, particularly regarding erosion and sediment control. Next one, please, Tom. And what we're going to have next is that we must be careful in environmentally sensitive areas. This was something, as I was going through this, at many hours of the perspective of development, environmental, and economic impact. I do believe strongly in the good parts of capitalism and improving the tax base. However, I understand the importance of protecting environmentally sensitive areas. And this morning, I realized that if I knew now what I knew when I was on planning commission, when we were redoing the comprehensive plan, there's one major, major change I would have presented a logical case for. And that paragraph there, there should be a future land use designation that is in-between low-density residential and resource conservation. This still allows development by right in an R1 area, but allows for development in an economic or an environmentally sensitive area. This should be developed with very low density. There should be green space spread throughout the single-family area, and the area can support this economically. And here we have, top right, 479,000 listed for sale. That is an adjoining property at Cornerstone. This area can support what a lot of people not, not realize it can support. So it is very possible to do single-family low-density residential and have it be economically viable. And finally, today, based on the emails that you've received, here we have Cornerstone residents, Windsor Hills residents, and city staff stating that this should be a motion of denial. Personally, I think this is historic. We have a convergence of perspectives that supports the denial. Ideally, there should be a brief discussion, a motion of denial. Those viewing can turn off their live view, and then we can all go home. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Swinton. Okay, anybody else want to come forward, speak in opposition?
My name's Mike Nellis. I live in Windsor Hills on Hunterdale Drive directly adjoining the, the proposed development. I'm here, obviously urging you to deny this. This development as proposed does not fit in the least. It's basically surrounded on all three sides by R1, low-density. Traffic in the neighborhood is an issue. We have narrow winding roads, there's no sidewalks. People walk all the time. There have been people walking, they go to work at 5:30 in the morning, and there's someone out there walking on the road. Buckingham is a major cut-through. There's a lot of cut-through traffic. Whatever goes in there is going to lead to increased traffic on Buckingham. The apartments that are being built now, people are going to come out of there, turn right. They're going to go to Dreaming Creek, turn right, and they're going to come, you know, barreling right through the neighborhood to get to Leesville Road. It's a shortcut, and we all know when we take a shortcut, we like to get through the shortcut fast. So there's, there's a lot of, you have to be careful. And Buckingham's a narrow, windy road. You have to be careful, and Buckingham's a narrow, windy road. It's up and down. That's something we're going to have to deal with regardless of what goes in. The fact that the proposed development is going to feed out onto Timberlake is going to make very little difference. My personal opinion is townhomes, you're probably going to have a lot more traffic than if you had families back there. And certainly, families are going to come and go at different times. So I urge you to deny the petition. Thank you for your time.
My name's Jeff Paltz. I live at 201 Hunterdale Drive. I am probably three houses down from Mike. This development runs right into my property, and Cornerstone runs right into my property. So I've had it both sides. My question, and I had for you guys, is I know Mr. Bell is smart, so when he bought that land, he had to know that it was R1. And to me, when I bought my house, I bought it because I knew it was an R1 neighborhood. I said, "It's a neighborhood. I'm going to be protected. My rights will be protected." But with this, changing it, then I feel like, do I have a say-so? So when he talks about putting townhouses in there, or R1 houses, detached houses, I've learned a lot from listening to you guys tonight, but that's what... I mean, he has a right to do that, but he doesn't have a right to put townhouses in there. And when he talked about traffic in that area, I read the same report that you did about traffic on Timberlake. I've taught driver's ed on Timberlake for 40 years. It is worse than it's ever been the last 30 years. He can't tell me that it's not going to affect it. Like I said, I teach it every single day. So I can tell you, the data might be flawed, but if you spend every day out there on that road, I can tell you, there's a problem. So I hope that you deny his request to put townhouses in that property.
Good afternoon. Y'all have my phone yet? My name's Albert Billingsley. I live on Morview Drive, which is behind the development. I, too, hear him in opposition to this proposal. When the group that is for it has said that they have talked with the Windsor Hills community, they have, but that was actually with the prior development. First time that we heard about this development was I saw the sign-up right off of Buckingham at the proposed entrance that's supposed to be emergency use only, that said it was going to be townhomes. There was never any discussion with the Windsor Hills Neighborhood Association prior to that, so this was a surprise to us. If he would have asked most of the neighborhood, yes, we are concerned about the traffic. However, this is R1. The previous developer that had this proposal before had talked to us about this, his idea, what he was putting in. And he got approval from us at the get-go, before he ever showed us any drawings. His proposal was to stay with R1 and have it come in. I would much rather have this stay R1 and have it come out into Buckingham, a known amount added to the current flow, than have the possibility, however remote they may say it would be, in the future, if I was in those townhomes, if they're allowed to be built at some future point, I'm looking at this emergency exit. That's a whole lot easier to get out. People would naturally assume at some point, they would like to connect that and open that up, and that would open up a floodgate. Personally, and with those that I have talked to, residents in the area, not only in Windsor Hills, but in Cornerstone, would prefer it to stay R1. Thank you very much.
Anybody else want to come forward and speak in opposition? Okay, well, I think we'll let Eve. She has some things that she'll be reading.
We have a number of written comments, as well as a voicemail did come in, so I'll play that at the end. All right, this first comment is from Peter A. Bell and Irene Bell. "We write regarding the proposed zoning changes on the property under development on Timberlake Road between the Windsor Hills and Cornerstone neighborhoods. We understand that TPB Enterprises has proposed a change in zoning from R1, RC to R4 for the purpose of building townhouses. The property lies in a space that is bordered on the north by Dreaming Creek. The area in question is low and serves as a floodplain for the creek. We live on Buckingham Drive, and Dreaming Creek is the north border of our property. What accommodations will TPB Enterprises make to assure that properties downstream do not become the new floodplain? Our other concern is the volume of traffic and noise high-density housing can produce. Timberlake Road between Greenview and Old Graves Mill is already congested. Does it really make sense to add high-density housing? We think not. We appreciate your thoughtful consideration of our concerns." This next one is from James Fong. "We live in the Cornerstone community at 512 Cornerstone Street. I am writing in opposition to the conditional use permit and rezoning petitions submitted to you by TPB Enterprises. I understand that they will be considered by the Planning Commission this Wednesday, May 13. We are concerned that by changing the zoning to a dense neighborhood, it would devalue our home since we are good-sized, single homes surrounding the building site. I have small children, and we moved here for the neighborhood's safe environment. Having more foot traffic would compromise that. My backyard is connected to this land. One of the reasons for having a house in a cul-de-sac is for privacy. If there were townhomes, even condos, it would destroy the view from my house and every single home adjacent to this land. It would put the value of our homes at risk. There should not be dense homes right next to a single-home community. There is a need in Lynchburg for more single-family homes. Existing single homes should be able to keep their value, and this rezoning would take away more single-family homes being developed. Even the Lynchburg Police Department has concerns that the builder is proposing to build so many densely spaced townhomes in an area that is surrounded by single-family homes. The police were also concerned about the increase in traffic through this area and the strain that this will put on the department. This connects to the safety issue I mentioned above. There is concern about the impact on the resource conservation zone around Dreaming Creek from the box culvert to be built across Dreaming Creek for a road leading out of the development to Timberlake. Could this box culvert cause 10- or 100-year flooding to back up into the adjoining neighborhoods of Cornerstone and Windsor Hills? This needs to be considered. It is for these reasons that I strongly oppose the granting of TPB Enterprises rezoning and CUP petitions and request that the Planning Commission recommend to City Council that they be denied." This next one is from the Freeman family at 222 Chesterfield Road. "We would like to take a minute to write about the zoning for the new development off Timberlake Road officially called the West Edge Development. Our family recently moved into Windsor Hills in the past two and a half years. This is a lovely neighborhood with a rich history and beautiful scenery. Currently, we have a huge concern about traffic and speeding through the neighborhood. Just yesterday, we were outside with our two-year-old son and someone on a motorcycle sped by our street going at least 60 miles an hour. We understand that new developments are inevitable, and we are all for progress. However, we have a huge concern about the safety of our family and our neighbors with this new development of even potentially more apartments going in, which will inevitably bring in more and more traffic. We live on Chesterfield Road, which is a cut-through between Timberlake Road and Leesville Road. I normally work in an office, but have been blessed to be working from home during COVID-19, and what I have seen scares me even more so than in the evenings when I am normally home. There are many seniors that live in this neighborhood, and they go for daily walks and sometimes with their pets. Our family goes for walks as well. Every day, there are speeders driving our streets, and I can't imagine even more traffic coming through our area. We know that sidewalks are expensive, but we think for the development to proceed or for any changes to take place, it should only be done if sidewalks are put in at a minimum, so that people can still walk this beautiful neighborhood without fearing for This next one is from Mabong Lee and her husband, Tori Barnard. "We live at 507 Cornerstone Street in the Cornerstone community. I am writing in opposition to the conditional use permit and rezoning petitions submitted to you by TPB Enterprises. I understand that they will be considered by Planning Commission on May 13. Our house is valued at around $375,000. We chose to make the Cornerstone community our home in 2018 and are expecting our first child in a matter of weeks. We have already experienced a number of events that give us concerns about raising a family here. We believe that the addition of densely placed townhomes will increase foot traffic and decrease the safety of our community. Even the Lynchburg Police Department has concerns that the builder is proposing to build so many densely placed townhomes in an area that is surrounded by single-family homes. The police were also concerned about the increase in traffic through this area and the strain that this will put on the department. There is a need in Lynchburg for more single-family homes. The granting of this rezoning petition would eliminate one more single-family home development. There is concern about the impact on the resource conservation zone around Dreaming Creek from this box culvert to be built across Dreaming Creek for a road leading out of the development to Timberlake. Could this box culvert cause 10- or 100-year flooding to back up into the adjoining neighborhoods of Cornerstone and Windsor Hills? It is for these reasons that I strongly oppose the granting of the TPB Enterprises rezoning and CUP petitions and request that Planning Commission recommend to City Council that they be denied." This next one is from Katie Kerdman and her family at 203 Ridgeline Lane in the Cornerstone community. "I am writing in opposition to the conditional use permit and rezoning petitions submitted to you by TPB Enterprises. I understand that they will be considered by the Planning Commission on Wednesday, May 13. I am concerned that Tom Bell is not being honest in his plans for this area. He is requesting to have this lot rezoned to build townhouses, but once it is rezoned, what would stop him from building apartment complexes? To validate my concerns, I've visited Cotton Town Manor, where he told homeowners he would build townhouses behind their homes, and there are now massive apartments right in their backyards. It is also known that Tom Bell has started a property management firm, and he is interested in building more apartments so that his firm can manage them. I am also concerned about the impact high-density housing will have on our area. The police department has expressed concern about the impact that this will have on traffic and the strain it will put on their department. I am also concerned about the noise level of high-density housing being so close to my own house. It is for these reasons that I strongly oppose the granting of the TPB Enterprises rezoning and CUP petitions and request that the Planning Commission recommend to City Council that they be denied." This one is from Susan Nice and her family at 505 Cornerstone Street in the Cornerstone community. "I am writing in opposition to the conditional use permit and rezoning petitions submitted to you by TPB Enterprises. I understand that they will be considered by Planning Commission at 4. We have recently finished our basement, and our 4,200-square-foot home is valued around $350,000. Townhomes, triplexes, fourplexes will not be of the same value as our home and the homes around it. Lynchburg Police Department has also expressed concerns about bringing a more densely populated area. There is a need in Lynchburg for more single-family homes. The granting of this rezoning petition would eliminate one more single-family home development. There is also concern about the impact on the resource conservation zone around Dreaming Creek from the box culvert to be built across Dreaming Creek for a road leading out of the development to Timberlake. Could this box culvert cause 10, 50, or 100-year flooding to back up into the adjoining neighborhoods of Cornerstone and Windsor Hills? It is for these reasons that I strongly oppose the granting of TPB Enterprises rezoning and CUP petitions. I request that the Planning Commission recommend to City Council that they be denied." This next one is from Suzanne Rodman and her family at 302 Hunterdale Drive. "I am writing in opposition to the conditional use permit and rezoning petitions submitted to you by TPB Enterprises. I understand that they will be considered on May 13. We have 130-plus single-family homes in Cornerstone with home values between $200,000 and $450,000. My home value is estimated at $278,000 via Zillow. I have spent my life savings to acquire my home with the idea of living in a small, quiet, and welcoming, single-family home community. Yes, Cornerstone is a mixed community, but our single-family home community is neighborhood-edge and backed up to Windsor Hills, compatible homes zoned R1. There is a huge difference in surrounding our single-family homes with the proposed $150,000 to $250,000 townhouses or quadriplexes versus similarly priced, single-family homes as envisioned by the Cornerstone TND and Future Land Use Map. The R4 high-density residential development will deteriorate our quiet, single-home life with additional transient renters, noise levels, foot and vehicle traffic, and potential crime increase. Lynchburg Police Department has concerns about increased density. The change has the potential to affect the current home values and potential resale values, if we can resale at all, a very scary thought. Yes, Lynchburg needs to continue to grow, but grow correctly to accommodate all residents, not just those that come temporarily for four to six years via college. There is a need for more single-family homes in the Lynchburg area. The granting of this rezoning petition would eliminate one more single-family home development. It is for these reasons that I strongly oppose the granting of the TPB Enterprises rezoning and CUP petitions and request that the Planning Commission recommend to City Council that they be denied." The next one is from Mark... I'm sorry if I say this wrong. Schgoemaker and my family... I'm sorry.
Shoemaker.
Shoemaker and my family at 517 Cornerstone Street. "I am writing in opposition to the conditional use permit and rezoning petitions submitted to you by TPB Enterprises and Tom Bell. I understand that they will be considered on May 13. My wife and I have designed our home in 2014 to be disability-friendly, as we are both in wheelchairs. Designing and building our home was no inexpensive task, as you can imagine when it comes to specialized accommodations. I am a lifelong resident of Lynchburg, and I insisted on remaining within the city limits as I wanted to support the community that has always supported my family. There were only a few small areas to build our house. Cornerstone was basically the only real option in 2014. Please do not eliminate the access to R1-zoned areas along Timberlake Road. There are many apartment complexes and townhouses available in the area already. Currently, our home is roughly valued at $400,000, which is considerably larger than the value on a townhome. The proposed townhomes and apartments will be viewed from my front door should the proposal pass. I know the value of our home and all the single-family homes around us will be hit negatively by another large addition of apartments mere feet from our front door. I would invite you to come to the end of Cornerstone Street to see exactly how close the new development will be and why we are all so concerned. There is certainly going to be development on the land, which is great, but the area should remain designated for single-family housing. High-end housing is already in the area, so I know more homes of this caliber can be built on the land, which will provide ample opportunity for Mr. Bell to either sell his lots to home builders or build nice homes and sell to home seekers. The property taxes were raised considerably for our residents this year, and we are happy to help provide Lynchburg City with the resources and needs to create a better community for all. We want to draw more people like myself who want to plant roots and stay long-term. Townhomes and apartment complexes do not attract these types of people. We would expect to see many more student residents and temporary living situations. I can attest that more students will not help with the traffic congestion and reckless driving I have witnessed on my comm- I can attest that more students will not help with the traffic congestion and reckless driving I have witnessed on my commute to work. The traffic has encouraged my family to install dash cams on all of our vehicles as a precaution. I am also concerned with future flooding and the impact new townhomes and apartment complexes will have on the ability to quickly remove tons of water. I know a friend of mine lost everything in his ground-floor apartment out on Waterlake Road a few years ago. The complex's sewer system was supposed to dispel the water, but it failed to do its job. With only a box culvert installed, will future floodwaters now back up into Cornerstone and Windsor Hills? It is for these reasons that I strongly oppose the granting of the TPB Enterprises rezoning and CUP petitions and request that the Planning Commission recommend to City Council that they be denied." This next one is from Mark Spain and his family at 509 Cornerstone Street in the Cornerstone Community. "I am writing in opposition to the conditional use permit and rezoning petition submitted to you by TPB Enterprises. When we purchased our home, we were told that only single-family homes could be built behind us. In particular, we were told the developer was building single-level homes for senior residents fifty-five years or older. My wife and I are very worried about the decrease in our home value and the value of all of the homes in our neighborhood if the petitioners of TPB Enterprises are granted. There is a significant difference between a backyard that faces other similarly-priced, single-family homes as envisioned by the Cornerstone TND and Future Land Use Map and looking out over $150,000 to $250,000 townhouses or quadruplexes. While Cornerstone is zoned mixed-use, the Cornerstone TND designed it to be layered with our portion of Cornerstone and a half of the property owned by TPB Enterprises meant to be the neighborhood edge. Our portion of Cornerstone and the undeveloped portion purchased by TPB Enterprises are compatible with Windsor Hills, which is zoned R1. An R4 high-density residential development would be completely incompatible with the surrounding area and would be in stark contrast to the type of development we and our neighbors were told would be built behind our houses. A number of us have reviewed the documents at ETrakit for this project and note that even the police department has concerns with TPB putting so many densely spaced townhomes in an area that is surrounded by single-family homes and the increase to the traffic through this area. The police are concerned about the strain this will put on their department. It appears from the review by the City Planning Division that they will likely not support the rezoning due to the proposed density, existing land use recommendation, limited ingress/egress, and ongoing reduction of land for single-family development within the city. The opinions of these experts should not be ignored. It is for these reasons that my family and I strongly oppose the granting of the TPB Enterprises rezoning and CUP petitions and request that the Planning Commission recommend such a denial to City Council." The next one is from Joe and Ellen Stennett at 109 Chesterfield Road. "As longtime residents of the Windsor Hills neighborhood, we are writing to encourage you to vote no to the Tom Bell request to change the zoning for his property behind the plan sheets on Timberlake Road from R1 to R4. As you know, traffic is already heavy on Timberlake Road, especially in this area near Kroger and the entrances to our neighborhood, which is already used as a cut-through from Timberlake to Leesville. The change to high-density development will increase the traffic to dangerous levels, not only for drivers, but also for the many walkers and runners in the neighborhood. We recently had several close calls while driving and walking through the neighborhood, once when an approaching vehicle with a driver not paying attention almost ran head-on into our car, and a couple weeks before that, when a car shot over the hill and around the curve, forcing us to jump out of the way while walking. Both these incidents were near the Buckingham and Hunterdale intersection, which is less than a block away from the Midtown Development, 197 Buckingham. For the currently-proposed 72 townhomes. On Timberlake Road last week, we were behind a car that rear-ended another car near the Sheetz construction. Adding to the aggravation of living a few blocks from all this construction work is that the back of our house received several doses of red clay dust during the earth-moving process. We have no problems with the existing apartments, of which there are many in our area, but we believe that maximum density has been achieved for the peace and comfort of the existing residents, both in single-family homes in Cornerstone and in the large complex near the Social Security Office. We noted in one of the online planning documents for this request that a representative of the City Police Department commented, "I am concerned about putting so many densely spaced townhomes in an area that is surrounded by single-family homes." However, the City Traffic Office commented that improvements will accommodate the traffic from this development, perhaps on paper, but not in reality, for walkers and drivers who have to use the relatively narrow roads in Windsor Hills every day. Finally, multiple proffers from the developer are unlikely to put a dent in the increased amount of traffic around the development, which is our chief concern. Thank you for your time and your attention to this note, and thank you for serving on the Planning Commission. We know it must seem like a thankless task at times." The last one is from Melissa Waugh and her family at 518 Cornerstone Street in the Cornerstone Community. "I am writing in opposition to those petitions which are reviewed by Planning Commission on Wednesday, May thirteenth. When we purchased our home, we were told that only single-family homes could be built behind us. In particular, we were told the developer was building single-level homes for senior residents fifty-five years and older. Our home is currently valued at $479,000. My husband and I are very worried about the decrease in our home value and the value of all the homes in our neighborhood if the petitions of TPB Enterprises are granted. There is a significant difference between a backyard that faces other similarly-priced, single-family homes as envisioned by the Cornerstone TND and Future Land Use Map and looking out over $150,000 to $250,000 townhouses or quadruplexes. While Cornerstone is zoned mixed-use, the Cornerstone TND designed it to be layered with our portion of Cornerstone and a half portion of the property owned by TPB Enterprises meant to be the neighborhood edge. Our portion of Cornerstone and the undeveloped portion purchased by TPB Enterprises are compatible with Windsor Hills zoned R1. An R4 high-density residential development would be completely incompatible with the surrounding area and would be in stark contrast to the type of development we and our neighbors were told would be built behind our houses. I have reviewed the documents at ETrakit for this project and note that even the police department has concerns with TPB putting so many densely spaced townhomes in an area that is surrounded by single-family homes and the increase to the traffic through this area. The police are concerned about the strain this will put on their department. It is for these reasons that my family and I strongly oppose the granting of the TPB Enterprises rezoning and CUP petitions and request that the Planning Commission recommend such a denial to City Council." And then we do have a voicemail.
Enter your PIN, followed by invalid entry. Enter your PIN, followed by pound. Invalid entry.
Hold on one second.
Message. New messages. Message. One.
My name is Joseph Shalev, and I want to address the development on Buckingham Drive, off of Buckingham Drive, Tom Bell, the developer. And I would like to say that I'm neutral at this, and I do not like any developments or anything new be built, but I don't see any other alternative other than what he's proposing right now, because I do not want any traffic to come neither on Brunswick or Buckingham Drive. So I'd rather have this than other development that comes into Buckingham. Thank you.
Received.
I believe that was the only one, but I'll double-check. Yep, that was it.
Okay. Anybody else who want to speak before we go into some rebuttals? Because we're going to allow you some time to address some of these concerns. And I believe since Mr. Swinton is here representing group, he also will have some time for rebuttal. So if you'd like to come forward and start with that.
Thank you. As with the presentation, Daniel and I will both be addressing and try and provide rebuttals. As far as the resource conservation area, the plan is shown here. The thin line below the stream is the RC-zoned edge on our property. So as you can see, the townhomes nor the inner streets are abutting that RC line. We've tried to provide a buffer between the RC-zone property and the townhomes. We've pulled them up the hill as much as reasonable to provide that buffer. By me counting contours here, I believe that the first townhome is about twenty feet above the stream. So there's a vertical separation as well as a horizontal separation there. The proposed box culvert is designed, and I mentioned this in my earlier presentation, the box culvert as proposed is larger than the box culvert in Buckingham, to allow more water through our proposed structure as opposed to Buckingham's structure. Also, the roadway is lower than Buckingham Drive, again, to allow more water past our connection or our proposed entrance as opposed to Buckingham Drive. Buckingham Drive right now is the constriction that's creating the floodplain, and our design is intending to keep Buckingham Drive as the restriction, and so the floodplain doesn't change. The elevation of the roadway is low enough, as well as the conduit underneath the proposed drive is large enough to pass the waters, and so any backwater that's caused will be caused by Buckingham Drive and not the new driveway. We understand traffic on Timberlake Road is an issue. We're not going to hide from that. I mean, we've all seen the newspaper article this week. It is what it is. But the traffic study that we have presented and was previously presented was approved with the previous rezonings. And as I mentioned, there are several things that are not being built. The supermarket, the high-turnover sit-down restaurant, which reduces the number of planned trips out of this development by about 4,700 vehicles a day. And there was 120 single adult dwelling units planned on this property. So it's not like this property was, never had a plan for any development. It was always planned, and these were not single-family detached dwellings also. As far as the apartments, apartments were mentioned several times. We do have a proffer that prohibits apartments from being constructed. All of the units that can be built here will be individual units for sale. It is not intended to be a rental community. It is intended to be individual townhome units for sale. And there are no planned pedestrian or vehicular connections to Cornerstone. So we'll come up with comments about pedestrians going into Cornerstone, but there are no planned connections to Cornerstone.
I think it's only limited to three minutes, so we have just a little bit more time.
Okay.
I think. Is one of it solid, Red?
No, it's three minutes.
Three, yeah. All right, Mr. Swinton.
Thank you. Ultimately, this is a land use decision, and what I'm going to pass on to you. Is it the grant? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're going to close the public hearing, and I believe there's going to be a lot of questions. I'd like to start. I'm just kind of curious about the 120 units that have been proposed for this space. They said there had been 120 units proposed for 55 and older in this one space? Is that what I'm?
No, the previous owner had spoken to the Windsor Hills neighborhood about doing some housing for seniors 55 and above. I do not know what the numbers were. He never submitted anything formally to us. So I think that was something that he was working out with the neighborhood. It never came to fruition. He sold the property, and this is what Mr. Bell has submitted.
Okay, yeah, that was something I think I've heard twice now, and I want to make sure I understood what that was about.
But to what you just asked, they're saying 120 single-family homes will be in this area? I just don't see how that-
No, I believe that had been something that had in the past, right? 120 units had been proposed in this one space at one point?
Yeah, present.
Historically? Sure, yeah.
Yeah. Steve, can you do the camera, please?
If you could zoom in, this is the traffic study, and so this shows all of the elements.
Nor move it up.
Oh, thank you. So these are all the elements of the development that were included in the traffic study. We'll get it right here in just a second. There. Apartments, senior adult housing attached, and there are 120 dwelling units. Specialty retail, which is being installed, several specialty retails. Convenience market with gasoline pumps, that's Sheetz. High-turnover sit-down restaurant, which is not included. Fast food restaurants, which was mentioned in the article this week as a Chick-fil-A. Supermarket, which is not being installed. And mini-storage, which there is a plan submitted to the city for a mini-storage unit. So these are all the units, are all the elements that were counted for in the traffic study, and it was 120 senior adult housing attached. So they're not single-family detached houses. I think they were intended to be something similar to Stonegate Villas, which is right behind the Kroger, a quadplex type of scenario. So they were included in the original plan.
When was that traffic study data?
This is 1216, and there's a supplement that was in 2017, which had this similar data.
Can I address that?
Sure, yeah, I'd like you to.
They may have accounted for 250,000 units in their traffic study. This has never been before the staff, the Planning Commission, or council. So we have never considered a land use of anything being developed on this piece of property. So they could account for however many units they want to. It doesn't matter. It does not tie you to anything if they accounted for the traffic in a previous traffic study.
120.
120, 200, it doesn't matter. You're considering the land use.
It was speculative.
Right.
On what might happen, yeah.
I guess my point was that the infrastructure is provided for that, and it is there. And that's where I drew those numbers from in my presentation.
This is also the first time you've ever seen a crossing of this stream, correct?
I just wanted-
One about the stream. Which way does Dreaming Creek go? It goes from Cornerstone toward Windsor Hills? So if the culvert backed up, it would back up into Cornerstone, not into Windsor Hills, right?
I believe so, yes.
Because it goes from west to east. I looked on all these maps, and I finally found one with an arrow, but I think it goes west to east. So, you know, it's not going to back up into both of them, but if Buckingham Drive is really going to be where it would back up, if this culvert's bigger than the one on Buckingham, I don't think that's probably the question. But I do think that road would probably get covered every 10 years or more or less these days. I have a question, I guess for Tom, or I don't know who it's a question for. Once they sell a condo unit, can the owner rent it?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. There are no restrictions?
Yes.
Tom, can you remind me what the number of units per acre in R1 is?
2.9.
Also, I think there was some mention of the gate, the locked gate, and the possible turnover you wanted Tom to possibly comment on.
Sure, so, go. Sure, so I believe the question was, is about the proffer. They've proffered to have that as a gated emergency access with a lockable barrier with a Knox box, which would be accessible by our police and fire department.
Can you explain what a Knox box is?
Basically, it's a box, and it has a code on it, and they're typically on the fire trucks. And at least the way it works in our department is we call in to dispatch and get a code, and they give us the code, and it unlocks that box, and it has a master key in it to unlock it. And they also have halogens and K-12 saws and other things. But anyway, they are offering to proffer that this will be a gated emergency access, right? And I think the point that Mr. Walton wants me to make is that that proffer would be enforceable by the city, and that is absolutely correct. The city could enforce that proffer. If they ever wanted to change that, they would need to come back through a public hearing process, Planning Commission, City Council, the whole process that we're going through today. The issue with that is simply this. They sell these units that comes to a new property owners association. They decide to unlock the gate. That means city staff has to go out, give them a notice of violation. That'll take 30 days or so to give them a chance to correct it. Then if they don't comply, we'll have to take them to court, and that's going to take so and several many months to do it, and it's going to take staff time and legal costs and all that in order to enforce the proffer. So yes, we can enforce it. We will enforce it, but it could be difficult for us to enforce.
Well, in my opinion, I would not want to zone, rezone this from R1 to R4. I really don't see a reason for it. The only person who spoke in favor of it was the person who left the voicemail and said he would prefer that the traffic go through his neighborhood than to have so many-- right? He would prefer, no, he would prefer not to have the traffic go through his neighborhood. He would prefer to have townhomes than to have single-family going through his neighborhood. So, but everybody in that neighborhood, all those people who've bought in R1, I think, have an expectation that the city will enforce their own zoning. And that's always been, I mean, it is R1. It has been R1. It was R1 when Mr. Bell bought it. And I believe it should stay R1 for the people in the neighborhood. So that's my opinion about that. As far as building in the 100-year floodplain, that's a moot point if we don't rezone it, so I would recommend denial of both of them.
And I, when I look at it, I, you know, I think of some of the things we've heard in the last six months about floodplains. You know, we made a decision on a project on Ward's Ferry that I think, I think we passed it. I'm sure we passed it, and I think maybe one vote was against it, and it crossed a floodplain, very little impact, and council, I think, kind of sent a message that, you know, we need to really protect these areas and watch out for them. And I, to me, that's one of the bigger issues because if you, you know, if you build a bridge from, you know, a bridge across there, well, then it might be a little bit different discussion, but you'd still have the issue of this in the use. And, you know, this is several, several steps away from what we see in R1. And I think there's some nice opportunities with R1 development, even we talked about the bank out on Boonsboro. I think, I think you can do some interesting things in R1 properties that are acceptable and can actually give a profit to a developer. But, you know, I would probably lean against it on both counts with the floodplain and the density in this area.
I have several comments. I went out there, I've been out there several times in the past two to three weeks trying to give various vantage points, look at the property. The first time I went out there, of course, was several years ago when we had the original development up there on Timberlake Road. So I go out here, two weeks ago, there, I'm in shock because this property had been further developed, had been bulldozed over more so than what it was. In fact, looking at other pictures, it hadn't been developed to the point it is already. And we're talking about environmental impact on RCs. I went back out with my binoculars trying to see erosion control barriers for runoff off of what's been done since they had bulldozed the dirt down. And that was, okay, we got the RC, now what about all the sediment? Because we talked about impacting the environment. Well, we weren't even advised that they're going to start developing the real estate. Now they're developing it for something, but they want to change it. And I was shocked on that, on the impact there. The other thing is, and I give my soapbox every time about, no, losing R1. And we have a habit of losing R1. Anytime we have a plot of R1, someone thinks we have to have an apartment complex in it. We don't. And I'm glad to see we, so many people standing up saying, no, no more. We don't need more apartment complexes. Diagram's very good there, shows the point there. Looking at the aerial photography of the area, apartment complex, townhomes, don't fit at all. The original thing that they're talking about, homes for seniors, that fits. No, if someone wants to go, when they put in 13, 26 homes, that fits. 72 townhomes doesn't fit. And that brings up to my next thing is on traffic. And y'all sort of beating around the bush on this thing. 72 cars, really? If I go out and buy 10 of those units, I can put three people in each one of them units. So we're looking not at 72 parking spaces. We need 216 parking spaces. We don't have it there. I don't see a space for 216 parking spaces there. Because we know someone's going to be buying this stuff as a speculation to rent it out to students or whatever, and we're going to have additional traffic. Your Knox box there, it won't last more than a month. It will be taken out by the people that live in the apartments. We will make our own access. We're not going to drive up there. People will find their own way for the quickest exit. And once they figure out it's going to take you four to five months to put another one back up there, boom, you'll be doing it again two to three times a year. Someone will take out that box just so they have a shortcut invariably. So I agree with you, the staff there, and denying the petition.
You know, I think, I think the shame of a lot of the stuff we hear is this connectivity issue. Like I think, you know, somebody said, well, this is the best use for the property. But really, the best use is probably R1 that connects in that community and maybe even has some walkable space that goes across into that area so people can actually get places. It's kind of frustrating to me when I see plans and they say, well, and we for sure won't allow people to walk into Cornerstone. I think that's just a shame.
At the end of Huntington Drive, there's a pathway that walks right into it.
I think that was one of the things they said, there wouldn't be any pedestrian access into Cornerstone from here. And I think--
There is one right there on Huntington Drive right into Cornerstone.
Yeah, sure.
There is pedestrian access in the cornerstone. Connectivity is the--
No, I was thinking of just for this project is what I was talking about. But I think, you know, if you had, if you had a reasonably developed R1, you could fit almost 40 units in there, I think, by your 30, yeah, so close to 40. And, you know, you could, you could actually do some nice things for the community if you did that.
Commissioner Perrault sent me his comments, so I'll share those. Counsel has previously expressed their strong commitment to protecting both R1 neighborhoods and floodplains. I see nothing in these petitions to justify going against such precedents, so I will be voting to recommend denial of both petitions.
I think unless somebody has anything to add, I'm assuming, Tom, that we're going to vote twice on each. So to that point, I'd make a motion that we deny the petition of TP, excuse me, TPB Enterprises for a conditional use permit to allow fill-in for the, within the 100-year floodplain.
I'll second.
All right, any other discussion? I was going to--
Hang on a second. Is to, can you say it again?
To deny.
We're voting to deny.
We're voting to deny the petition to fill--
By saying, by agreeing, by saying I, we're agreeing--
Agreed to deny.
Okay.
Yeah. Good?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. So one of these we voted on, the other one is the R1 to R4.
So I would make a motion that we deny the petition to rezone the acreage off of 197 Buckingham Drive from R1 to R4.
I'll second.
All right, any other discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, without hearing anything, these both go down, and of course, you can take that to City Council. I really appreciate you coming by, and thank everybody for the time they spent here discussing this.
I just, for the record, I just want to say that Commissioner Perrault did recuse himself from the first item. Commissioner Light was in favor. And then for the second item, Commissioner Perrault was also in favor.
Great, thank you. Okay, any, any new or old business that we need to address right now?
No, I apologize for the technology issues. We thought it was going to work a lot smoother than that, but--
The first time never does.
We'll keep working at it. I know Eve and Victoria both, especially Eve, have worked very hard on continuing continuity of service, and we appreciate that. So we apologize.
I would be having a meeting--
Not the 27th.
I don't believe so.
Nothing, nothing planned anytime soon? Okay, great. All right.
All right, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Have a good day.
All in favor, aye?
Dave, are you there?